All right, it is seven o'clock, so I would like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting from nine eighteen twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Chandra. Are there any substantive corrections or changes to the minutes? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. I'm not aware of any additions to the agenda, so we will move on to presentations and public input. I don't believe we have any presentation, so if anyone would like to address the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole, please feel free to come up to the microphone. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rosie Dawood of the Law Offices of Matukaal Heding Emkies. I represent PK L H LLC, and I'm here today to talk to you guys about the resolution you will be discussing later today, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero nine four R. I'm here to request that this committee table this resolution until after the conclusion of the ZBA case twenty twenty-three dash C dash five. As any decision rendered tonight by this committee would inadvertently have an impact on the ZBA pending case. I had sent a letter to the committee earlier today, I believe a few hours ago. I'm not sure if you all had a chance to review it, but essentially there is a pending ZBA case going on regarding the present property, two oh five North High Cross. We are set for a special meeting. I do not believe it has been scheduled yet, but from my understanding, the earliest it could occur would be December sixth. We believe any decision reached today as it pertains to this resolution would impact that case, and so we are requesting that this resolution be tabled for discussion and, more importantly, voting until after the ZBA case is concluded. I understand that there isn't a rule or ordinance in place that requires this committee to wait, but due to the unique character of the ZBA case that is pending, we would like to request that this committee consider it. Thank you, and I will stick around if any of the committee members have questions for me once this resolution is kind of brought up officially in the new matter. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to address the committee of the whole, please feel free to come up to the microphone. And we do have those letters. The copies have been distributed to council and will be included in the official minutes as well. Thank you. There are two letters. Are there any other email communication that have been asked to be read into, read into the minutes? No? Okay. We'll move on to staff reports then. None? Oh, yes.
I can't remember what the rule is in terms of public input via email. Are we only reading them if they are, if they say specifically to read?
That was my understanding, unless we were requested to read it out loud. It'll be included.
But so long as they indicate public input in the meeting date, they are automatically included in the meeting minutes, so they will be incorporated into the meeting record in the event that they don't ask for it to be read, too.
Thank you. All right, there are no staff reports, there's no staff report, so we will move on to new business. First item is Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash nine two R, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, M A B A S Master Agreement twenty twenty-two. Someone from FIRE here?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
So MABUS is the mutual aid box alarm system, and it's, it has grown significantly since we first became participants. And so now that there's so many different jurisdictions and in different states, they have come up with a standard agreement that basically allows for reciprocity of certifications and so forth. So there's this new master agreement which was passed by the MABUS board in twenty twenty-two, and now they're just taking it around to all the participating jurisdictions and asking the governing bodies to approve and adopt that new standard agreement. So we've been participating in MABUS for decades.
Any questions for Carol? Mary Alice?
So I have heard of the mutual aid and the fact that we help and they help us if there's a need. Do we know how often in the past ten or twenty years that we've requested assistance?
I don't know that, but I'd be happy to find out.
I'd just be interested to know. And then the other part was if we loan equipment or personnel, I noticed there's some discussion about charges and how that would be paid for. Is that, if there's an emergency disaster, for example, does FEMA come in and pay for some of the extra staff that's being asked for in MOBUS, or is it just assumed that we all?
I think it varies by the nature of the event, but it's not, it's not a given that FEMA would come in by any means.
No, I'm just trying to think of the pay, right? So if we send staff there, I'm just trying to figure out if there is like a pot in the federal government that helps alleviate some of that.
I see, I don't know, I could find out that as well.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Oh, go ahead, Chandra.
I'll move approval of Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash one one dash nine two R, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, MABUS Master Agreement two thousand twenty-two, on to City Council for approval. I'll see on the regular agenda since we have some outstanding questions.
Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any further discussion? This is a resolution, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion passes. Next, we have Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero four two R, an ordinance approving a license agreement east half of Urbana Parking Lot Number One, one two three West Water, and Community Development will be speaking on this. Thank you. We both came up because our items are related. Also, I'm filling in for Economic Development Supervisor for the...
Can you pull your mic just a little bit closer? Thank you.
Better?
Yeah.
All right. For the first item related to the east side of Lot One, the City Council is being asked to approve a license agreement for the use of the east side of the city-owned parking lot one, which is the southeast corner, the West Water, North Race Streets, to the Rose Bowl for three years during the months of May through December. The Rose Bowl has used this lot for the last three years. First, in twenty twenty, it was a response to the COVID pandemic. They desired to continue to provide live entertainment in a safe environment. The Rose Bowl provided their own tent, chairs, labor, and continued with performances May through October. The city did not charge at that time. In twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the city issued a request for proposals to determine if there was any other interest from anyone else in activating the lot, and then, and also if they would be willing to pay a fee. The only response was the Rose Bowl, and they offered to pay five hundred dollars per month during those same months of use. So consequently, they were awarded the bid, and during each of the three years, the Rose Bowl has offered extensive variety of live entertainment, almost daily, and it has been favorably responded to. There's also, it's noted in the memo, there was even a survey about, we had three hundred favorable responses also supporting that. While there is an impact to the parking meters that are in the lot, we don't expect that there is much of a loss in general of revenue as a result, because A, people can park elsewhere, and B, you have to look at the number of people that are attracted to the downtown as a result of this. So the action supports the economic recovery and support, which is strategic area number four for the council. Also, the twenty twenty-two Downtown Public Rome Study, big idea number two, which is music and event space, which discusses that Urbana is known for its music scene and various events, yet lacks flexible space for temporary outdoor venues. There are no previous council actions related to this because the term was for less than a year. The idea behind the request right now is economies of scale, to go ahead and group this and go ahead and have the same approval but for three years. Public Works will be asked to provide and install directional signage for the area, and the Rose Bowl has demonstrated that the community supports and appreciates outdoor entertainment in the proposed location. I've got to read it verbatim because it's so good. Continued similar use will encourage residents and visitors to enjoy downtown Urbana and also, and to provide almost daily activities for guests that are staying at the new Hotel Royer. So again, the City Council is being asked to approve this three-year license agreement for the east side of the public lot number one during the months of May through October. And as the very next item, we have a small piece of right-of-way that will have a very similar request. Are there any questions about the ordinance? James?
Okay, thank you for this. I think we've demonstrated over the last several years that this is of interest to the community. One thing I do recall is that we each time have had to make some temporary, maybe traffic changes. Is there going to be a mechanism where we won't have to do, if we do something like this for three years, can we have a temporary, non-permanent change that correlates with the time scale that we're talking about?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, James. Yeah, to make something that's in place and won't have to come back for council action through this three-year period, yeah. Well, my light's on. My voice wasn't working, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Yes, I hear what you're saying, and I think that to make sure we just have the traffic control in place that doesn't have to come back to council periodically through that three-year period makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions? See, a question from a council member, and then I believe, is that what you were pointing to?
No.
Okay. So Chandra, and then if you want to come up to the microphone after that.
So the other months, it just goes back into the parking lot. I can't quite remember. It just goes back into the regular parking lot during the winter months when the tent ends up?
Correct.
Correct, okay. That's all.
And we have our representative from the Rose Bowl, so if you want to come up to the microphone, state your name and make your comment. That is fine.
Hi, my name's Charlie. I'm one of the owner's operators at the Rose Bowl. So one thing I wanted to just clarify was, you may recall that the current agreement that's in session, so to speak, is for one more year. So the request is for three additional years. So twenty twenty-four is on contract right now, and we're requesting a three-year extension. Just to be totally clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mm-hmm. So just to further, this would be asking for the year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Yeah.
I think some of us are just looking at the memo that was included in our packet.
Not in the license agreement. I didn't remember.
You can amend it on the, if you, if you give us direction to amend that, we could. I think there was a misunderstanding about the intent.
It says the term shall be the period May first through October thirty-first for the years of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six. It's in, in the contract already.
I believe, I don't know where the misunderstanding has come from, but if you are supportive of it, we can make the changes and bring back an amended version next week.
Mary Alice?
I guess the question is, you had started with year twenty twenty-five, so do you currently have for next year?
Yes, so the RFP that we, I get confused about the terminology. There was a request for a proposal we filled out, and we asked for two years, which we were granted, and we're in the middle of that right now. And then approximately August, I requested Stephanie to propose this, which was a three-year extension.
So you're looking at this particular three-year to start on the calendar year of twenty twenty-five?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Do we know what the intent was? Obviously, it says twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six in the contract. That is the information that I have. The term is listed for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any discussion or proposal, recommendation from the council in terms of, yeah, Grace, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to recommend that we check that before next week, make sure we're all on the same page about what's already agreed upon, payments, all that kind of stuff, and correct the years there. And then if there weren't other questions, I'd be willing to put it, motion for the regular agenda, so we can clarify next week.
Are there any questions? Go ahead and take the motion.
Sure. Then I would move ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero four two R, an ordinance approving a license agreement east half of Urbana Parking Lot Number One, one two three West Water Street, on to the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace and seconded by Chandra. Is there any further discussion? Grace?
I'll just say that I really appreciate this arrangement on the Rose Bowl and on the city, and I've heard a lot of positive things, of people who like it, and live music every single day is absolutely amazing. So I think a lot of people really appreciate that. I think there was some issues in the beginning, maybe about parking lot uses, but I think that that has seemed to worked itself out at this time, from the sounds of silence, I guess, on it. And again, I've just heard positive things, of people really appreciating that as a great outdoor music venue. So thank you to all the parties involved, and I'm happy to support this.
Any further discussion?
I just, given we've all never chatted about it, if people have any questions for me, I've pretty much been there more or less every day since this has all happened. So I know there was a question about the flow of traffic, and I've witnessed that and all the fun moments associated. So just wanted to welcome anyone to ask any, any questions that you have regarding...
Thank you for that. So I think just to clarify, we're going to move this on to City Council with a recommendation for approval, but on the regular agenda, so that there's an opportunity for staff to review the specific years that this will apply to, just to make sure that everyone is clear and on the same page. So with no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. All right, next, we have Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero nine three R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with SMC-re LLC, the Rose Bowl Tavern, one oh six North Race Street.
All right, so now for the, the other aspect related to the Rose Bowl here is related to basically a strip of land just north of their building. It's in Goose Alley, so we're talking about the use of part of our right-of-way. We're going to approach this with a little bit different, kind of a separate thing from the parking lot license agreement that Kim just talked about. So the, this specific license agreement, it's a right-of-way license agreement. I'll get into what the content is. The action requested is to authorize the mayor to execute this license agreement. So SMC-re LLC is the official LLC for the Rose Bowl Tavern. The owner of the Rose Bowl Tavern, thank you, for this, for an outdoor seating area that's going to be adjacent to the building. So the, we did, you know, ensure, we'll just ensure, one stipulation of it is that pedestrian clearance is maintained on the alley walkway as it is today. And this picture really kind of tells it all here on the right-hand side of the image. There's basically a planting area, a raised planting area on the backside of the building, the north side of the building. And what's being proposed is to do work within this area to convert this to an area for seeding and for more, for use rather than landscaping. And so, you know, we're, you know, long as providing the pedestrian pathway, there's really no objection that Public Works has to this use. And in the map on the left-hand side, you can see it's a four-foot wide strip that just goes along the length of the building there as described. And so this would be, it's with a lot of our right-of-way license agreements, is for a twenty-year term that we have, and they'll pay an annual, an annual fee associated with it by the eighty-eight cents per square foot, kind of rental fee that we have established in our schedule of fees. So our recommendation is to, for council to authorize the mayor to execute this license agreement, and if the ordinance is passed, mayor will do such, will record the agreement, and then SMC-re LLC will construct the seeding area after getting a permit, you know, kind of a construction permit through the city and getting that approved. So do you have any questions?
Any questions for John? Mary Alice?
Would you mind going back to the picture? Thank you. So the picture on the right is, there's like a sidewalk, and then there's a little bit of bushes, so to speak.
Right.
Right, so is the right-of-way license going to take away that path?
No, no, the, the property boundary, the right-of-way, is basically to the edge of the building. And so that landscaping area is within the right-of-way, and that's really what's going to be, that landscaping area is going to be taken out, my understanding, and replaced with a paved area with seeding, just some like benches and things like that.
It just seems so narrow where the landscaping is.
That's right, yeah.
It seems like you couldn't really do much with that.
You know, four foot give you enough space to put, to put seeding in that area and maintain the sidewalk next to it, yeah.
This doesn't look like four feet. Okay, so that basically they're getting four feet to then put some kind of patio area style seats, benches, and maybe a small table, a cafe table or something.
Yeah.
I guess the applicant is...
Yeah, I was going to say the applicant is here, and you can feel free to answer that question.
So the idea would be that planter would be removed, the concrete curb would be removed, flattened to be a sidewalk, so you would just see sidewalk all the way to the building. And then we have bench, bench seats that we would bolt into the new sidewalk, and so furniture wouldn't come into the sidewalk, and there'd be no tables in front of the seats. It would just be little side tables, kind of between these love seats. And it's a nuanced use versus what you might imagine, outdoor patio. It's, a lot of people kind of, even when we have the parking lot, kind of stand right outside our door or kind of congregate there. So the idea is then we have just this area where it's like, okay, well, you can go sit over there rather than sort of standing in Goose Alley.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Grace?
I guess maybe I didn't process quickly enough my question. I think maybe it was already answered. I think that makes sense with the benches there, because I also had some of the same concerns about tables and chairs, and people might pull out other chairs, and they're taking up the sidewalk space. So I think the bolted benches definitely make sense. You know, people can still stand and congregate and block the sidewalk, but people can do that now without benches or any other right-of-way, right? So, yeah, I think that helps. I was struggling to kind of envision what the space would be, but I think that makes sense with just the benches. And so I guess the question remaining, if you could confirm, so will the designated sidewalk space change at all? Or are you saying the curb and that planter is four feet?
It is approximately four feet. So like that, that curb is six inches wide, if that helps. And so like the curb, and then this, if I find my pointer, if you can see my pointer, there's a joint here against the concrete. I would guess that's close to a foot, so if that helps you visualize how that makes four feet, as you kind of get across. It's a funny perspective at this angle, but...
But we're not losing any sidewalk space or driving space on Goose Alley, right? Or if so, it's a few inches in the sidewalk, right?
Correct, yeah, and this is an area where cars aren't able to go at this time.
For sure, just the concern being if it were taking up the sidewalk space, it would push pedestrians into the driving space, but it sounds like that is not the case, right? They will both be maintained.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Comment, just to directly address that, the idea of, if there's, if you all can picture, there's a tree and a bike rack and a little curved area that is, so if you're looking at that photo, to the right is south, so to the left, there's a curb, a bike rack, a tree. So people wouldn't find themselves just wandering in to the parking lot on foot. There's a curb and a structure to their left. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, this is a picture looking now west rather than east, partially showing what Charlie's saying. Probably, we tend not to take pictures of the scenery, we take pictures of very specific stuff. There's a little bit right there, too, yeah.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think the point just still stands that if you see a crowd of people blocking the sidewalk rather than weaving your way through everyone, people might be inclined to just walk into there. But I think that that is a point that's kind of regardless of whether you have benches or not. As you said, people, you know, I have definitely seen people tend to congregate outside there, and I think that they're more, you know, arguably more in the way of traffic and walking than having a designated space.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a recommendation?
I'll move Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash one one dash zero nine three R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with SMC-re LLC, the Rose Bowl Tavern at one oh six North Race Street, on to City Council for approval on the regular agenda. Why did, that was tough.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Grace. All those, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. All right, next, we have Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero four three, an ordinance imposing a tax upon the use and privilege of renting a boutique hotel room. And we have Elizabeth Hannah.
So since twenty nineteen, when the previous City Council originally approved the development agreement for the Hotel Royer, the plan has been to pay an incentive when, when the hotel is fully operational, all parts of it, and then to, for the city to repay that debt with revenues generated by the hotel, including a boutique hotel tax, as well as property tax increment, food and beverage tax, and the regular hotel motel tax. So this ordinance is really just following through on what's been in the development agreement for all these years as we move through the process. Currently, based on the definition of a boutique hotel, this would affect only Hotel Royer. And we wanted to get this, this in place now, just to make sure that if they are ready to open as early as December, that we're prepared for that. So happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Grace?
Could you repeat or clarify what you said about it only affecting Hotel Royer? Is that because they are the only boutique hotel?
Right, correct. Because of the definition of a boutique hotel, they would be the only hotel affected.
But we're not writing this for them, it looks like. If a new boutique hotel opened, that would also apply to any future ones, right?
Correct, it would. But this is specifically written as to make sure that we are able to repay the debt that we'll incur to pay the development incentive.
Yeah, yeah, I understand the context there, just making sure that this would apply to any boutique hotel. And then I guess that kind of follow-up question would be, do we have a good official or operating definition of a boutique hotel?
So there's a definition in the ordinance. So I can read that to you if you like. It's in Proposed Section twenty-two, one seventy. It's in, in the proposed section 22170. It's defined as a small stylish hotel typically situated in a fashionable urban location. Boutique hotels often have fewer rooms with a variety of, variety of unique room layouts or distinctive concepts. Boutique hotels have a distinct character such as historic or themed, which is emphasized with intentional design throughout the property. Service in a boutique hotel is personalized and may include innovative amenities.
Thank you so much. And then one last follow-up question is, who decides what qualifies as a boutique hotel?
So I, I think if, if we were to have another hotel that we thought would qualify, we would have to take a look at the hotel alongside the definition and make that determination.
Do we have an idea like if, would it be under city administration or like zoning, planning, the assessor? I guess I'm just curious, you know, how if hypothetically I was gonna open a, you know, cute hotel and I say, no, it's not a boutique hotel, I don't wanna pay that tax, like, who's gonna...
Right. I mean, hopefully we'd have that conversation before somebody opened a new hotel, but this will be written into the city code, so I think that would be a legal interpretation.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So, I guess, thank you for reading the, reading that out loud. The first part of that definition doesn't sound like it applies, but certainly the second part of it does, meaning the sentences, right? It's not small, it's not a small hotel. It doesn't have fewer rooms, but it does have a variety of unique room layouts and it is a distinct character as in historic and themed. So it, it meets some of them, but it doesn't meet other parts of it. So I, I guess, I don't know if we should put some qualifying language in it, could contain yada, 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 right? Because nothing's going to meet all of it.
Certainly, we could edit the language, but I think when the definition was developed, the belief was that it does qualify. I, I guess small is a relative term, right?
Small is definitely relative.
Grace?
Yeah, because I would just jump in there and say that there are smaller motel sixes with fewer rooms than the Hotel Royer. So I mean, I agree with that not maybe quite fitting there, because it's, what, 100 or 200 rooms? I feel like there are arguably more rooms there than some of our smaller motels.
If you would like me to strike the word small, I could send back a revised version for next week.
I think there's some interest in, in that. Any other questions? Chandra?
So does the, the tax, is, is the tax imposed on those who are like rented out the banquet rooms or is it just the sleeping rooms?
This is a tax on room nights.
Okay.
So it would not affect the banquet, they would pay the food and beverage tax.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion. I'll move ordinance number 202311043, an ordinance opposing a tax upon the use and privilege of renting a boutique hotel room to City Council on the consent agenda with the change to the definition of boutique hotels.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice and seconded by James. Is there any further discussion? All right, go ahead, Chandra.
I guess I have one more question versus discussion, sorry. Is 4% like the average? Like where do we get 4% from?
I'm, I'm not sure I follow. Can you ask that again?
Um, where did you get the 4% tax from? Like why 4% versus three or six or whatever?
So it's part of a package of revenues, including the property tax increment, the food and beverage, and the regular hotel motel tax. And it's, it's essentially the amount that makes the equation work so that we can pay off the development incentive debt within 10 years.
Okay.
Any further discussion? James?
So, that would mean that if the hotel was very successful, that, that, I think we talked about that equation changing. It's based on a projection of occupancy. If that starts to look better, that's how the door would open for lowering that amount, potentially?
Correct, and Carol or Kimberly might be able to speak to this more, but we're doing an analysis, a, a new analysis now of what that likely looks like. So yes, it's, it's possible. I don't think it's likely that this could ultimately be a lower rate than 4%. And it's possible at some point in the future, when the debt is paid off, that the, some future city council might choose to eliminate the boutique hotel tax.
Yeah, I think we have, we have a 10-year projection period for the payback, so I think it's entirely possible that, that things might change if we're doing really well and, and that we're, that we're ahead of schedule. So I think we're just, you know, it's a little bit organic at this point and, but we're open to, we're open to examining the possibilities when the hotel is so extraordinarily successful that, you know, we, we need to make adjustments. We're looking forward to that problem, actually.
Grace?
Uh, sorry, just one last technical question thing to bring up. On section 22173C, when it talks about the late fees, if they don't pay the tax when due, that it's 1% per 30-day period. Just don't know if, I mean, I imagine that's 1% of what they owe, not of their gross rental revenue, right?
Correct, 1% of what they owe and that mirrors the late fees that apply, apply to the regular hotel motel tax. I mean, we hope nobody ever pays a late fee, but we want to incentivize them to pay timely.
I just don't know if it's worth it or that's just average, always legal implication to add percentage of what, you know, it's just percent, you know, of back taxes or what they owe, if that's helpful to clarify or not.
I, I can take a look at that for the revised ordinance.
Thank you.
We have a recommendation from Mary Alice and a second from James to move this word with the proposed changes, but on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Grace?
Was this consent? I would...
It was cons...
I would request it to be regular, but I can also just request that next week unless the movers were interested in...
I'm, I'm fine with putting it on the regular agenda, James.
Yes, since we're talking about some potential revisions.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, so we'll move this forward on the regular agenda. Any further discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes, thank you. All right, next we have ordinance number 2023-11-044, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number four, Omnibus Alley is presenting.
All right, so this is a short list. I'll start with the general fund. So there's only one that we are changing. So staff is requesting an increase of $24,000 in the executive department's legal services budget, and this is to cover any additional or any anticipated costs related to the ongoing hospital property tax litigation. And then in the public works department, we are reallocating a total of $210,000 of available funds for multiple projects. And this is in the storm water utility fund. And this is to be used towards the impervious area mapping project that is needed to be completed before the storm utility rate increase, which takes effect on January 1st of 2024. This will also aid in the expansion of the manholes and cache basins inspection and GIS updates project. And then, so the initial plan of the construction of the ARPA-funded sanitary sewer lateral lining program project was set to start in fiscal year '25. So $130,000 was already allocated in this fiscal year's budget to, to cover the cost for planning. So the remaining $1.166 million was allocated in fiscal year 2025 for the start of the construction. So this budget amendment would just move that construction fund to this fiscal year. So this would allow the staff to hire just one contractor to do both planning and construction that would start this fiscal year 2024. And I think that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mary Alice?
So it sounds like we're moving up the timeline on the sanitary sewer because we want to bundle the cost between the planning and the people who are providing the service.
I believe John could answer that question.
Looks like John's gonna answer that.
Yeah, I, we're, it's more like, I think it characterized it as basically staff did kind of the planning efforts to create bid documents. And so we have, actually bid documents are out, we're gonna open bids tomorrow for construction. So, you know, if council would be supportive of this, we're ready to, would be ready with bids to proceed with the construction part, which would be the, inspecting the private laterals and determining improvements needed and then doing lining where it's appropriate.
Rare that we see a timeline move up on the infrastructure project, so this is exciting that it is moving up.
Yeah.
So, my other question had to do with the $210,000. We had a big conversation about the, the raising the amount of money that we charge and trying to figure out the impervious area. And, and at that time, there was conversation about how quickly it could be done. Is that this cost here, the 210?
That is not the whole 210. The, it's a small part of the 210 is the, doing the like, essentially like the audit of the impervious area with mapping. Most of that is for expanding the budget for the manhole GIS data collection and inspection project.
Okay, thank you.
Chandra?
So we're moving the 210, we're reallocating from these three areas here. And I, I know we talked a lot about the storms, who are cleaning and televising and how we were so far behind in that and we were needing, really needing to do that. When would those funds, I guess, be reallocated back to these projects?
The, you noticed that some of the money came from a cleaning and televising contract?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Yes. And part of thinking what I could characterize that as, we did get lower bids than we were budgeting for this past year, but we've kind of broken up the city into, I wanna say like 12 blocks of areas. And so rather than kind of bleeding over into the next block, like we're in area four, rather than taking some area five as well, we decided to, to hold on and, you know, we expect we'll have like a larger program next year, if that makes sense. So, you know, with a lot of these maintenance programs we have, they're not really, it's like, it's not an equal spend each year, if that makes sense. Like some years, well, we know we're gonna have like 500,000 of inspection, next year we'll have like 400,000, just because it's, it doesn't get smooth with the budget each year.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
Thanks.
Grace?
I had some, yeah, similar questions about the projects that we're taking from to do this. And so you just clarify, make sure, understand all this. So this is, yeah, that required, you said part of it, that required kind of aerial mapping so that we can increase the storm water utility fee based on impervious surface area. And part of it for some other GIS mapping there. And we're taking from these three other projects being storm sewer lining, Boneyard Creek Crossing Improvement, and storm sewer cleaning and televising. And so with the thought process here, you know, we need to do this upfront cost to do it ahead of time, which I really do appreciate Public Works being open to committing to having that figured out before this tax is implemented. So as the thought process, we have to do this upfront cost now and we will have increased revenue later because of it. And then will we eventually, when will we get to these other things that we're taking from?
Well, I think the, I'll, I'll say again, the, what went to the aerial mapping, it's gonna, I wanna say it's less than $30,000. It's, it's a small part of what we're talking about here. The large part of it is going to the manhole inspection and data acquisition. And so that was the project where we've got like 10,000 structures in the city, manholes in the city that a company is currently out inspecting. And based on the bids, the bids we got in when this project was out for bid, we could only afford to do about 80% of the network with our budget, and so that's what we started doing. And when we found that there were other projects where we had available budget in this fiscal year, we wanted to take advantage of, this company is out there, they are blasting through these things very efficiently, let's expand that to 100% of the system so that we can take advantage of that efficiency. And that's, that's the bulk of what this, this money is being used for.
I think I'm just still wondering if there's anything you can do to reassure the council or the public that like the Boneyard Creek Crossing Improvement will still happen at this time? Or you're saying that this is all available excess that we weren't going to spend anyway this fiscal year?
Well, so the, for the Boneyard Creek, the bank stabilization project, I didn't speak to that because the challenge we had with that the first time we went to bid was that we had very high bids because of the difficulty accessing the site. And this was for stabilizing the creek between Broadway, you know, west from Broadway to Race Street. With some efforts we made to acquire easements, make access more, more easy, we actually got really good bids, the costs came in lower than we were fearing. So that's really what that came from. That extra money was in case the costs were gonna be higher like they had been in the first bid. So it's kind of a, you know, successful, you know, rebidding process and we were, we were fortunate that the costs came in as they did.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So you're saying this, this really is surplus, not sacrificing these projects, right?
Correct. We're, we're sticking with the, the other programs are what we intended to do in this fiscal year and just, yeah, we had surplus to work with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions? For John or for Ally? Grace?
I'm just wondering, and it's okay if we don't have the people in the know on this here currently, how things were going with the Dr. Ellis ARPA sewer lateral? Because my understanding is that you need the individual residents and property owners to enroll in this program and give permission, since some of it is privately owned, right? So I was wondering if there was an update on how that's going, just as far as if we're pushing up the timeline, has there been enough kind of public outreach and engagement to move that up?
Sure, yeah, definitely. And we are, a group of us is gonna meet with Charisse and members from the neighborhood to kind of make sure we nail down our public involvement plan. The short of it is, we have, we're gonna get a contractor onboard with us who's gonna do the inspection work and the lining work. And so that contractor is gonna be a partner with us through the public engagement process. It's actually like pay items on the bid that you will, you know, they're gonna come with us to the public engagement meetings as a resource for residents to be able to ask questions to. And the, yes, you're right, like, these are privately owned laterals, and so we have to get access agreements from the owners before we can do any work in it. And so it'll be, you know, a critical part of this process. We're planning to get the contractor onboard and under contract and begin the public engagement in January. And we will not be able to begin the inspection work until we have access agreements to get that going.
Thank you. Any other questions about this ordinance? Is there a recommendation?
I'll move ordinance number, excuse me, ordinance number 2023-11-044, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number four, Omnibus, onto City Council for approval on the regular agenda.
Second.
Moved by Chandra and seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes, thank you. Next we have resolution number 2023-11-094R, a resolution directing the zoning administrator to file a rezoning application for 205 North High Cross Road. Presentation by exec, but I think this was brought forth by council, right? Is this different?
I'll, I'll just tee it up. So, according to our zoning ordinance, rezoning applications can be initiated by the city council... rezoning applications can be initiated by the city council. And I received a request from Councilmember Wilken to prepare this resolution. I worked with the city attorney, Dave Westner, to do that, and it is before you.
Grace?
Thank you, yeah, I would speak to the resolution and request a bit. I emailed the packet from a ZBA meeting, which is not, you know, the content of the ZBA meeting is not relevant to this zoning change, but I saw it would be helpful to give you some of the maps and zoning stuff if you hopefully had a chance to take a look at that, if you wanted more information. What I would characterize, summarize my understanding of some of the brief history here is that this property, 205 North High Cross Road, this is the property vacant lot just north of Urbana-Aldi. It was originally zoned B1. That's kind of in the zoning, the long-term planning. It was changed to B3 in 2020 when Christie applied for zoning change and a special use permit to build a clinic. And that is because of maybe the unique situation with how clinics fall into our zoning, that maybe Mary Alice is interested in elaborating on in a bit. But Christie didn't build a clinic there and now have sold or selling the property for other uses under B3. Currently, there is a conditional use permit for a storage facility there, but that is not what this zoning application request is about. So this is only to start an application by our zoning administrator. And then we would still vote on the zoning change, just like any other property zoning change, with information and recommendations from staff. I believe it would also go to the plan commission first. And I also understand, hope that then the surrounding neighbors and property owner would be notified, and it would go through all the proper channels and procedures like any other application for a zoning change or permit. So I think to the point that this would be interfering with the ZBA case is not the case because this is, again, separate from that permit or that pending conditional use permit, which is completely up to the ZBA. That will not come to council. Whatever the ZBA decides on the conditional use permit is the final decision. And so if the conditional use permit passes and we change the zoning to B1, then that storage facility would still be allowed. It would be legally non-conforming because they put in the application when it was currently B3. So I think to that point, this doesn't conflict with the conditional use permit, the ZBA case. Those are completely separate issues here. If the conditional use permit does not pass and we change the zoning, then from there, it would only allow B1 uses on that site. Also, if it did pass and we did change the zone, then sometime in the future, if that business closes and another one were to open, then they would need to conform to B1 allowances for future uses. What is, I see is the issue here is that B3 allowable uses that would have no public input, no commission, no council approval on this site would be adult entertainment center, cannabis dispensary, ambulance services, tavern or nightclub, liquor store, and other uses that, you know, for that reason why we have B1 versus B3 are not what we intend to be in residential areas. So I think that B1 makes sense because that was originally the plan and the zone. It is right next to a residential area, as you can see on the maps. It is next to other B1 zones. The Aldi property is zoned B1. And also to say that this is what I would support for any neighborhood. It's not because it's high-end or affluent. I don't think that a self-storage facility will threaten or harm their children. But I think because this makes sense, historically speaking, logically speaking. And again, this is separate from the conditional use permit case. This is just about, as a community, what do we see as the appropriate zone for this property? And I think it's the right thing to change it back since it was changed under a unique set of circumstances that no longer apply.
Mary Alice, did you have any comment on that?
I guess my only comment is that, to the best of my knowledge, medical facilities aren't allowed by right in any zones. I don't know if Kim's still here. She is here. Which is a big part of why this was rezoned from B1 to B3 because of the medical facility desire at the time. That didn't come to fruition. And I agree with Grace in terms of the allowed by right in B3 don't seem appropriate for a neighborhood. Aldi's isn't even that level. So I actually agree with most of what Grace said tonight, that this is not something that will impact any pending requests. So the zoning board of appeals, anything that went to plan commission, whatever applications are in there right now, this doesn't affect any of it. It only affects any, if this is changed, any future ones. Changing zoning is not easy. There's lots of notifications that have to go out. There's lots of different boards that has to go. So it's not going to be something that can be done even before the zoning board of appeals on December 6th. This won't happen until next year to have that come back to city council. So it's a little confusing, but we have by right, so that means that anybody can build anything in those different categories. We have conditional use permits, and we have special use permits. Conditional use permits are determined by the zoning board of appeals. They're the ones who get the final say on that. Special use permits go through the zoning board of appeals and then come to city council for final approval. So those three categories get a little confusing sometimes. So, Kim is still looking up information. That's my two cents.
Are there any questions? Yes, Mayor Merlin?
Just one clarification. The owner of the parcel is OSF Healthcare, not Christie.
Oh, thank you.
All right, is there, are there any other questions related to the ordinance? Or sorry, the resolution, my apologies. A public comment happened earlier, sorry. The previous person was allowed to speak because it was related to a proposal related to their business. But you're welcome to continue to submit comments. All right, is there a motion?
Can I, I think, I'll move. Thank you so much. Resolution number 2023-11-094R, Resolution directing the zoning administrator to file a rezoning application for 205 North High Cross Road.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any further discussion? James?
Yeah, I'm going to support this. I think it raises a concern. I think this original zoning may have happened just before I joined council when this change occurred. But, you know, sometimes we get frustrated when people ask a lot of questions, and this is a good example of why it's important to ask questions. What was done here was done with a certain intent, and then the intent was not followed through, for whatever reason. You can, circumstances, what have you. But it created this unintended consequence that I, that we're working through at this point. So it, this location clearly should have been stayed B1. I don't know if there was another path to allowing, you know, special use for it to be developed into the clinic that was originally proposed, but that's where I'm going to be going. When someone's talking about changing zoning to do something specific, I'm going to be asking the question of, how do we know? And what happens if you don't follow through on that? And are we, are we moving when that doesn't come through to move it back to where it was? Because the intent of why we changed it was not followed through. Thanks.
Grace?
I also wanted to add a comment. I forgot to mention, some of the support from the residents and the public and some of my constituents in Ward 6, I think maybe all were on a few emails about this site in particular. Been in contact with quite a few people over email and meeting in person and meeting with people who are representing other groups of their neighbors and their HOAs. And so I'd say that, yeah, from my experience, there's definitely public support, from what I've heard for this, for my constituents. And if it gets to, you know, if this is approved and it goes through the formal processes and public input, I imagine that that would be evident. And this also, this case in particular, I'll just mention it here, brings up, I think, a separate issue that I wanted to bring up in strategic goals. And this context makes it a little more understandable, I think, about having more opportunity for a formal protest from the public. Because the way it's set up currently, my understanding is when there's a public hearing by the ZBA, that's the first time that the public is given information on a subject. And that's also the last time that they can submit a formal protest and a petition. So I just don't understand how residents could be expected to be organized and have a formal protest the very first time that they've been informed of an issue. I've mentioned this with some staff, kind of brainstorming. It sounds like it is possible to maybe have some other models, from other examples, of an informational hearing first, so that people can gather information and then, say, have a formal public hearing, which is different from our hearings, that's where they decide the case. Because I think it's really important for residents to have some time to organize. I think this is one example of quite a few where residents have come out and organized, and they've even got petitions signed afterwards. But at that point, it's too late to be an official formal protest that has a meeting, like, would trigger a supermajority approval. So I think that this, I just wanted to highlight it here with a little context of what I'm talking about, about having more opportunity for public involvement in these kinds of decisions. Because I think this absolutely would have given time and knowledge about how they were supposed to have done this process. They would have got that in beforehand, rather than afterwards, when it's too late.
All right, any further discussion? All right. So we have a recommendation for approval from Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Regular?
Was that, yeah, I think that wasn't specified, so.
Wasn't specified, so I think that means regular by default, right?
Yeah, correct. Thank you for that clarification. Next item is council input and communication. Anybody like to speak? James?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to mention, I was able to attend the township appreciation lunch on Saturday, and I want to credit our township supervisor, Danielle Chinowitz, for showing appreciation for all of her staff and all of the interns and all of the volunteers that helped do the work of the township in our community. It was a, it was a great event. It was tied in to the visiting group from France. And I could tell a lot of people were having a great time with that, although I only got to see the end of that. And so I just wanted to mention that. It was, it was good to see, you know, some gratitude for the work people put into this community.
Grace?
Thank you. I finally am announcing Ward 6, I believe, the last listening session with our new chief of police and myself. This one will be next Thursday, November 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And this will be at Salt and Light, which is 1819 Philo Road in Urbana. I believe will be in one of the classrooms. So that's when you walk into Salt and Light on your right, not towards the main store, go to the right, and there are classrooms back there. Again, that will be this Thursday, November 30th, at Salt and Light from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m.
Any other council comment?
I will mention briefly, I think a number of us were at the Berry Dunn listening session. It's good to see that moving forward. Heard some of the same things that I heard in the Wards 1 and 4 listening sessions with Chief Boone of community members really asking to make sure that we are prioritizing staffing other departments so that we're more rapidly responding to resident needs other than just related to law enforcement. There have been a lot of, a lot of sessions for public engagement around law enforcement, and we're hearing a lot of requests for other services that do not fall under law enforcement. So I wanted to share that. If there is no further council input or communication, and there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.